Basically.
You don't need that snowboard.
I was a fifth, he bought it and she kept it.
Oh my god.
This is no thanks, I don't want to be on TV about that.
I have individual gauges, better in color, I can scan them all in color, email them to everybody.
Oh, so expensive.
Yeah, there's no color on this yet because I wanted to make sure that I could pull out with a number change.
Yeah, who was interested in the numbers? Yes.
Well, it's really just your changes which were incorporated, there's a few of those, and then Dick's, I just went through and pulled them in and held out the ones out for various reasons. But this isn't, those are definitely were the only ones that were.
There doesn't look like we go to Sarah. I don't actually know where you found. Three kids. About six, eight. Yep, as soon as we had the first kid, decided my wife was not going to work. And what?
It worked for us.
It was the right thing for us.
At this point, I feel that you could tell people that whatever changes they did make, it was because they made sense or it wasn't something that would lead, didn't obscure the integrity of the article.
I got most of my apple trees pruned.
I took all the ready, but some of the explanation from they did with the actual body.
That's nice.
But when you see the new version with the different colors, you'll be clear, but they really weren't.
Nikki can last me two years, I'm gonna get a big water heater.
Besides your, the other stuff I could tell you is the explanation.
What are they nice, go twelve feet? Call meeting over five oh three. This meeting is being recorded by our secretary with her magic pen? No, she doesn't have the magic pen.
Magic pen, just an iPhone.
Magic pen, yeah.
Magic app.
And Mr. Gant has got his recorder ready. We have a sign up sheet, I would appreciate you guys signing up so we know who's here. We know you all anyway, so.
There'd be less than one.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
So let's move to item one. It is the ADA grant award.
This is really just paperwork.
Informational piece.
Informational, and I just need the board's authority to sign off on that.
I still didn't.
As I've been designated by the state with their forms of the signatory, but I just wanted to make sure I had a formal vote on the record to enable me to do that, so that there's no confusion.
Kelly, how did this grant come about?
We applied for it.
We applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant to do the elevator.
I do remember a board of selectmen meeting in which that was presented, I believe it was about the beginning of January.
And it voted.
And we had a discussion about it, it had to do with the covenants of the grant, and it was clear that there was some concern about that. It was essential to set aside at that meeting pending some future information.
No, it was voted, it was voted, two to one. I wouldn't have gone ahead and applied if the board didn't vote in favor of it.
Oh, I will be corrected, I thought that we had to sound, there's even more information before we go ahead, I apologize.
For the interest of those over here, we applied for a hundred thousand dollar grant to apply toward the building of the elevator in the new town hall. And we did not get that grant, we missed it by a very small piece, from what I hear. And so we had pretty much decided we weren't going to get anything, and then Kelly got a call and said, hey, there's another town that's applied for twenty-five thousand and they're not going to use it, but we'll give you the twenty-five thousand if you'd like it. So that's what this item one here is all about tonight, is agreeing to accept that twenty-five thousand.
Thank you for explaining that, where the contingencies live it?
No.
Like historical, okay, good, thanks. It's like manna from heroin.
Yes, good way to put it.
Okay, moving on, are you gonna say anything about that, or if I say nothing?
Well, if you could just make a formal motion to approve the ability to accept the grant and to authorize the town administrative to sign on the town behalf.
And I'd like us to accept the grant award and to vote, and vote, and to vote for the town administrators to sign up for twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts towards the new town hall elevator. All in favor, any other further discussion?
I don't believe that the covenants of this grant are appropriate for the town of Tobsfield. I think it's a mistake to take on the grant and that responsibility for the future, including various pieces of material that were in the original grant request.
Uh, any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And we'll vote, and we're also voting on Kelly to sign that grant.
It was included in the.
Yeah, it was. I just wondered to make sure we understood. Item number two.
I, really, this is a, an update, just to let you know that based on the information that was submitted to the board last week, we did additional updates and minor, some minor edits that were recommended and referred by both three of you actually selectmen, and those have been incorporated in the latest draft which you have before you. I understand that because we had some technical difficulties today, that you might need some time just to review those. I would only ask that by tomorrow at, if noon time is workable, if I could get any specific feedback. I can tell you that there were some changes that were suggested, but they weren't incorporated, and that could be for a number of reasons. For the most part, I felt that we had the most flexibility with the, with the explanation. I felt that some of the suggested changes to the actual warrant article weren't advisable because they were originally endorsed and prepared by town council, and I always hesitate to change what town council has recommended that we use, for fear that we could undo the intent of the warrant article. I think maybe there was, excuse me, maybe one or two cases where that was the case.
Could you point those out for us?
I can in one moment, I just, I just wanted to, while I'm thinking about what the other changes were, there were perhaps some changes that were referred to for the motion of the article, I think these probably involving the same warrant articles. And so wherever there was a case that I didn't incorporate the change, it was because of some specific reason that I could point to that was either referred by town council, or it didn't really meet the integrity of the original intent of the article. So I can walk through, we can walk through if you'd like, and I could point out the areas where there were some changes, in particular, the ones that weren't incorporated. Selectman Gant appeared to have a preference for left, for right, for left justification. So I left justified Article Second and pulled out the right justification so that it looked centered on the page. For Article Six, which is on page three of twenty, order of the Masco Regional School District capital request. For the most part, I incorporated most of the suggested changes, however, I didn't get too in-depth with the description. And the reason for that is because all of these numbers are preliminary, we haven't officially received a specific written request to add this to the warrant, so I didn't want to waste too much time writing something that would then later be redefined or rewritten by the Masco School Committee. I presume that as soon as tomorrow, we'll know what the, what their budget request is going to be, and I can update it.
I'm just gonna make the statement to John Spencer, is it the Masco School Committee meeting tonight to establish the budget? So we should, we might, we might have those numbers tomorrow.
And I believe that that's the intent, and certainly I would be following up with the superintendent to make sure that whatever information is in the warrant accurately reflects the latest votes and the presumable reduction in their assessment for both the annual operating budget appropriation on Article Fifth, but also on the Article Six, which is of course the capital request. I did change the title to capital request, I don't know that that consequential. Article Fifth, yes.
Traditionally, the selectmen have put in the primary amounts for both the operating budget and the debt required in the article itself. So those numbers, I could ask that they be included.
Oh, no, that's not the proper legal form for that, you leave the numbers, the numbers are specified within the warrant motion. The article is merely to see if the town will vote to approve, I added the word gross operating budget to indicate that we're not the only ones to approve. In fact, last year I looked to the town council and asked them about this, and they said, the fact of the matter is that we don't have to approve the whole budget. All we have to approve and appropriate is our, is our portion of that budget. So that's probably why we, why the word gross was taken out, but I don't think that it's, you know, it might be irrelevant, so I added the word back in there. However, the amount for the budget isn't specified in the article itself, it's specified within the motion. So that's why I didn't add the extra.
Again, traditionally, we have, as a town, there's nothing wrong with doing it, it is an option, as you point out, it's not necessary, but it has been a tradition of ours to do it. If the board for some reason wants to change our tradition, that's all right. However, let me just explain the gross operating budget, the importance of the word gross is that without the gross, we're simply dealing with the operating budget, which does not include the debt. The gross operating budget includes the debt, so it's very important that we approve the gross operating budget. That's why the word gross is in there and must be in there, it's not an option. If, if we want to have a approved, appropriately approved budget out of the debt.
Once again, the motion specifies the numbers that are legally being authorized, and those numbers and that entire motion is effectively the, you know, the job of the FINCOM to make that recommendation, we merely put it on here for information. And even from a legal standpoint, it's not even required that we have it on here, and because of tradition, we do include the numbers. However, most towns don't necessarily even write the motions for the numbers. One practical consideration for not keeping it into, or putting it into the article is that from time to time, it's just another number that we then need to, you know, check on, so not only are we doing a warrant article, but by tradition, we include a motion and a description. And every time you include a number in any one of those things, it means that you have to look through and make sure that that seen number goes through. So I just felt that it was appropriate to not put the number in the article, but if this board agrees otherwise, I, I might.
Well, I don't know, first of all, it lists the amount of our assessment that goes toward the debt service. I think all you want is the debt service that is part of the gross budget.
Two things here, one is that in our warrant, it really has to say gross operating budget that we're approving. We can't, we have to tell people that we're approving the gross budget, not just the operating budget, because we need to tell them that we're also dealing with the debt. That's what the gross helps us include, is the debt. So that, that makes the warrant, and the warrant as written is correct. It's just that traditionally, and I think appropriately, we have included the two numbers, which are essentially the total operating, the total operating budget for Mascanama overall, and then our number for the assessments. Not necessary, as I said, but it is a tradition, and I think it's appropriate to do that, but if we don't want to do that, we don't have to do, we do have to have the word gross in there.
Also, one clarification is last year's version of the warrant did not specify the number as well. So I was using last year's experience and template to, to design this year's template, so, to be consistent.
Then I want to move on, I want to move on. I will bring up something I want to, drives me nuts to see this. Between Article Fifth and Article Six, I'd like more space because I'd like, I'd like Article Six to start on the next page. I don't like to have the title on one page.
Oh, right.
And the body on the next page.
Same, I agree.
Okay.
That, that's not the final word.
And that's gonna push everything down, so you gotta check every page to.
That's exactly what we do as the last step, because that's gonna change, and that's why we wait till the end of.
I'll take that on face value, and I'm gonna hold you to that.
I have a pet peeve myself about that.
All right, all right.
I agree.
Then we can move on.
Okay, so the next item.
Mm-hmm, which one are we on now?
Um, let's see, you left off on the seventh.
No, let's, let's go back to the sixth. I think it's extremely important that in the description and the explanation that we have at the bottom, the average citizen can look at that and do the calculation to come out with a hundred and forty-eight thousand that we're responsible for. So I think it is, it's really, it's very difficult, when somebody sees the two numbers and then tries to take the twenty-seven point oh four percent of a reactor kind of a number, and can't come up with a one forty-eight, they're sitting in their house at the kitchen table trying to figure out what's in this warrant and how much it's costing them, and they can't figure out why a twenty-seven point four is not a hundred and forty-eight but something else. So I think it's extremely important that we, at least if we, if we think we're putting, helping people, we ought to put all of that in the explanation as was suggested in my edit to do just that.
Well, is the one forty-five eighty-four wrong?
No, right now it's correct.
It's a correct number, but if you take the number that's here, there's two numbers that are shown here. One number is the capital request, which matches what's up above here, so to speak, is the capital request of six seventy, six hundred seventy-eight thousand. If you take that and multiply it by twenty-seven point oh four, you don't get the one forty-eight. Now, some people will go back up into the numbers and try to understand the numbers, but if you just read that one paragraph, which is our way of explaining in layman's terms what's going on, you're not going to come up with a one forty-eight. Twenty-seven percent of, of six seventy-eight is not one forty-eight. That's, and I wrote it up, I just, I wrote it up.
Is it off to five forty-nine?
Yes.
Is that what?
It's the five forty-nine five.
It's the officer.
I was gonna tweak this, but again, I haven't heard from Masco what they requested, so I felt it was kind of silly to waste our time when they haven't even officially given us their request. They want to have to edit it today and then edit it again tomorrow.
Well, as to what the numbers are.
Well, they're requesting.
We have to put the data in so somebody can do the calculation.
I agree, I agree, but right now we're using old information, and I could just as soon wait till the new information comes in before I start crafting what it should sound like, but I agree.
Well, the fact is, you got, you got two things here, somebody could figure it out from there, for sure, because that's fairly poignant. The tabulation is fairly poignant.
Actually, when I do this over, I'm gonna take off from above. It says, so up above, and this is what I think is confusing, what we're trying to say is that the total request of the expenditures is going to be six seventy-eight. However, of that amount, the only thing they're asking Tobsfield to, to appropriate for is a hundred forty-eight. And for that six hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of capital expenses, though, that request includes the following. So what I will be doing perhaps is to Selectman Gant's notation, I will take off this, these four, the four columns or four rows at the bottom. I think I should be taking those off, again, depending on what Masco recommends. But to be consistent, we could say here are all the requests, and then within the explanation, I would expect that we would say, of the total amount, there will be an offset of this much, and Tobsfield's share of the, of the five hundred fifty thousand at twenty-seven percent equals a hundred forty-eight thousand, whatever. So I will clarify that when I get to the next version, and I have a chance to see what Masco has officially.
Get your real numbers from Masco.
Right.
And clean it up, don't make it more complicated.
No.
Because in my opinion, this is not a real problem here.
Oh, I don't think so, yeah.
If you decide to do nothing with it, I'm happy with that, because I can, I can live with what it says. The description is not misleading in my opinion, the numbers up here are what you should be. We're paying twenty-seven point oh four percent of the capital budget, and that's what it says there. And our amount of that is one forty-eight, five eighty-four.
We're not paying twenty-seven percent, twenty-seven percent of the capital budget, we're paying twenty percent of the remainder after Mascanama has contributed, whatever that contributes, a hundred somewhat thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it basically says, here's what our share is, and it's twenty-seven point oh of the total cost after offsets, it says that.
It's true, it's true, not a.
Boyd, suggestion, if you put, if you put after offset, put that number of five forty-nine in there somehow.
Yes.
Forty, forty-seven percent of total cost in parentheses.
There's a full write-up, there's a full write-up, I marked it up with.
She, she's gonna.
I have to do is take the edits that I put and put them in there, and it catches all of that.
Got it.
It represents one or two additional sentences to what's there.
We've already given it more time than it deserves, so let's move on.
Next.
Just, just to be clear about this raise and assess and appropriate, I left it, and I made it consistent, because last year this used to be confusion. I'm on Article Seven.
Okay.
And I highlighted, well, in my copy, I've highlighted the word and, but that's really my reminder to let you know that throughout the document, and it's really the same thing, whether you say to raise, or to raise and assess, or to raise, comma, assess and appropriate. For the most part, it's all the same, I just wanted to make sure we were consistent throughout. So there'll be places in the warrant where you'll see to raise and assess and appropriate. And that's intentional, because when we started to make variations, I was getting complaints that we weren't being consistent. So in order to be consistent, yes, there's two ands, however, there are times when you have to say to raise and assess, or to transfer with available funds, and appropriate. So just as a clarification, I just wanted to be clear that everybody understood that that's intentional, that there may be times that it says and to raise, and assess, and appropriate. But it was to be consistent throughout the document, because that was a constant theme of some of the feedback from prior wards.
Note made, let's move on, go over to the next one.
Uh, no changes until, there, oh, Article Fifteen, Special Indemnity Leave Fund, it's on page seven of twenty. This is, I ran this by town council, because it's a little bit more, it's essentially the same article that we approved last year, but this year we're just trying to appropriate money to it. And so there was some discussion about the reference to Sections one eleven F or one hundred. Really, all we're trying to do is to appropriate money, because we've already accepted the statute, which is in accordance with one eleven F. Now, one ten, Section one hundred is mentioned only because it's traditionally, when you're paying a one eleven F benefit, which is statutory, I mean, statutorily, we're required to pay, and when you do, the other piece is one hundred, which means that if you're in an injured, on duty accident, it's public safety, you also may have medical bills that would also fall under that statute. So it's mentioned in there, it's not intended to be confusing. If we had to, we could take out, we could strike out Section one hundred from the whole thing anyway, because the bottom line is, we've already adopted it. It's already been added to statute, to one eleven F, we're basically just allowing the statute to carry through to the town. So whether we mention Section one hundred or not, it's really irrelevant, but I put it in here, I can also take it out. But I did go to town council, and I've asked them to take a look at that, so any final changes, I will let you know. But this is what I, I sent to them for their final review. Article Seventeenth, Seventeenth, I'm sorry, Article Seventeenth, as one of our agenda items, we can talk about this more in detail, the second part of the meeting, but I just wanted to let you know, it's, it's intentional that there's still a sum of blank, because this, this proposed expenditure will essentially be a rounding number that will conform to the guidelines of the FINCOM. But it's subject to the final number we need to come up with for one of the other articles, and I'll talk about that one in a second. Article Eighteen, this cemetery building, Selectman Gant had some suggestions, I just, for the most part, I worked them into this where, where it made sense. And throughout the document, our intent was to change park and cemetery to parks and cemeteries plural. And just to be consistent, we've called it exterior renovation and building repairs, because it essentially, to me, it just, I would have just left it at building repairs or exterior building repairs, but renovation seemed to be a word that, that you preferred, so I don't think it's, I don't think that it, it was the intent of the article, so I've changed the title. And we made everything else, what we also did is we're referring to it as to fund exterior renovation and building repairs for a cemetery building in the Pine Grove Cemetery, known as the Hearst House, including all incidental and related expenses or take any other action. So what we've tried to do is to say, it's a cemetery building, it's in the Pine Grove Cemetery, it's known as the Hearst House. And that way, we've sort of, we're consistent throughout the article, the motion, and the description, so that everybody knows what it is. And maybe I should add quotes around Hearst House in the explanation. And anyway, there were some suggestions that were made, and I just tried to tighten that up a little bit, so that's what you have here.
Fine.
Actually, I worked with Steve Shepherd, who of course worked with commissioners, they have requested that the Hearst House references be out of that, they wanted it to be referred to as, they gave a choice apparently, I was talking with Steve, I wasn't talking with them, as either building or barn building or barn, but to leave that Hearst House out, I think they think it's more confusing to people than anything else. So at a minimum, I would ask that we remove, in deference to them, the references to the Hearst House.
Just as long as, I think we should probably, because we're trying to preserve the intent of where the funding is going, I think that it might be appropriate, even if we strike it in other sections, that we might want to refer to it perhaps in the summary. So that it's not any cemetery building, it is, and if we call it a barn, I think people will say, why are we spending twenty-five thousand dollars to paint a barn? So my inclination.
I question why we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars on the building at all.
Well, then you have every right to do that.
Yeah, but I, again, in deference to them, they ask that it not be referred to as the Hearst House or whatever.
Well, because I think Kelly's making a point about the fact that you want, if they're applying for the money to spend on that building, we ought to designate that building, otherwise they could do something else with it. That's not what they're asking for, they're asking you to put it on that building.
I would just, I can take it out from up above. And from the motion. And we can leave it in the explanation, so that there's some public record of what their intent was, and for months I've had this on as the, in fact, we were calling it the Hearst House. Whatever, I, I have no dog in this fight, it doesn't matter.
Since it's not, since it's not a designation of, quote, capital, Hearst Capital House, just take the caps out while we refer to it in the explanation. The Hearst House, just take the caps off.
Yeah, it's not a proper, a proper name of the building, so you could take the caps off.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
Put it into Google, it's not gonna find it.
Okay.
It's on the Google map.
If we're gonna get out of here before nine o'clock, we better keep moving, let's go.
Just did some minor cleanup work on Article Twenty, fire engine two, vehicle repairs. Selectmen Lyon and Gant both had some suggested changes, we just tried to clean it up a little bit. So this is just the result of both of the combined changes to simplify it.
By the way, along the way, Kelly, you're gonna tell us the things that you are holding, because KMP had put them in there, and you don't want to make changes to them. You said there were two or three items that KMP had made recommendations on that you didn't want to change. You said there were two or three items that KMP had made recommendations on that you didn't want to change.
Right.
At this, because you just identified those as we're going.
They're in front of you right now, yeah.
Which ones, though?
Well, I've already explained-
So we know as we're going through them.
The indemnity fund was one of them.
The indemnity, okay.
Um, okay, um, there were some suggestions made by, by Two Selectmen on Article twenty first, require personal protective equipment. Tried to, um, again, simplify that a little bit and make it a little bit easier. Go out and write us some repetitious language, explain what the NFPA, NFPA was. Um, and that was pretty much it for that one. Just some cleanup work. And then next. Too, too, too much. Two, license and permits, twenty ninth, um. Planning Board will be submitting descriptions for Article thirtieth. So this is marijuana establishments, they're having their, um, public hearing, I think the twentieth. So, but I, Planning Board is submitting descriptions for the article, so as soon as I get that, hopefully tomorrow, I can add that in there and have our next, um, version. And I know because you're wondering, Article thirty first will not be a little orphaned on the bottom of the page when we get to the final version. Because it drives me crazy too. Uh, Planning Board will be submitting-
Great, lines think alike.
Descriptions for the articles.
So Kelly, just tell, what's different between today and tomorrow as far as the Planning Board? Did you say tomorrow on the plan?
They're writing descriptions.
They're writing-
Well, I'm assuming tomorrow. Donna said that they were, that Martha was working on, that the chairman was working on, on descriptions.
And her target was to get it to you by tomorrow?
No, I, I, I'll reach out to her and see. But that, I'm hoping the sooner the better. And she knows that we're, you know, full speed ahead on these. So I'll touch base tomorrow just to find out. Um, all the rest, anything? So Article thirty third, this one. This is the zoning, the overly district. All we have is a letter to the board. Uh, and we have a suggestion that I think this is gonna be at the public hearing. This is, um, by the appeal by the patents. And it would require a town zoning bylaw. I have very little information on this, however, um, I've been told that the Planning Board and Town Council are currently working on some information. Um, I will likely touch base because I don't know that it's appropriate that we would be spending, um, tax dollars, on this particular article. Uh, but that's, might be something for us to discuss as a board at some point. I just being very sensitive to the fact that, um, Town Council bills are already, you know, expected to be above budget or over budget. And I don't want this, um, this article to make that situation any worse. So I will, I just wanted to let you know that that's what I understood to be the case with the Planning Board. And if they are consulting with Town Council, I will just be reaching out to Town Council to, um, touch base with them and to let them know that we are very- What I would be asking Town Council to do is to let us know how much time would they need to spend on this article. So that it's very clear from the, from the, um, from the beginning of the process, that we are not going to be doing the work of a petitioner. Or whoever they are, whatever the, you know, whether you agree with their article or not, that, that is really not our, um, job to be writing their articles for them. I understand that they have a private, um, attorney that's working with them. So I will, um, rest assured, we'll be touching base with Town Council to make sure we're very clear about what our expectation is for Town Council's involvement in this particular article. The sign regulations have been, the, the formatting of that, I went through. The, the Planning Board submitted a slightly revised version of that warrant article. Um, they took out the reference to the, um, the enforcement. They felt that the Board of Selectmen should have and does have, um, any enforcement authority. That perhaps the better approach would be to figure out what that authority is and to help publicize that and educate people about that. And we have some ideas. I mean, I know that I was working with Selectman Spencer on some ways that we can get out more information that's, would be helpful to people. Um, so the bottom line, though, is that Town Council felt that adding enforcement divisions into the zoning bylaw wasn't the best approach. So we are eliminating that from this whole article.
Before we, thank you, but what, um, my apologies in advance, I'm not an expert in this, so, but I'm being a little cool. But my understanding was, when this started to perkly, that it became, we became aware that there already were enforcement provisions.
Correct.
But they were general enforcement.
That's right.
So they were someplace else.
Yes.
In the bylaw.
Right. But I understood that they were applicable to this.
Yes.
So, I, so I don't wanna go backwards, but just, so why can't we just cite that and say, see general enforcement provisions or whatever the sections? What, what I understood at the start of this was that people went here and they're not experts and when they were in this particular part of the bylaws, they didn't see enforcement.
Right.
So they didn't know how to link that to the general enforcement. So that, that, that seems very simple.
It does. And, and I'm sure Town Council could explain it better, but if we were to say perhaps use, have to mention that enforcement power within every article that it would apply to, our bylaw would be so large that, so I, I think that that's part of it, is that to simply repeat in this section what enforcement power we already have is really redundant and unnecessary. That, that the challenge for the Board of Selectmen and myself, working with you, is to figure out how come that, that connection isn't happening and how do we best publicize it in a way that doesn't involve a zoning bylaw change?
Sure, that's okay.
And I think we have some practical ways to do that.
Yeah, well, that we could bring them forward. I mean, it might be as simple as re- renumbering where enforcement is or-
Yeah.
Or, or adding a, you know, like side letters in collective bargaining, but something like a side letter on the website that says foreign enforcement, you know, in the index. I mean, it might be very simplistic.
Exactly. I, I, yes, and I'm definitely on the same page with you. One of the things that we also talked about is maybe something as simple as, um, you know, we've learned a lot about putting what you can and can't put into your, your property tax bills.
Yeah.
One of the things we can put in legally is probably a notice saying that, here are the sign regulations, and if you have questions, here's an N B A call, here's the application to complain, here's, here's, you know. So, so there's some, there's some other ways that we can go about dealing with this issue without changing our zoning bylaw.
Can we hold on to that thought and bring one or two of those ways forward? Doesn't have to be in the warrant, I think, yet.
Yes, and I was, I didn't wanna steal Selectman Spencer's thunder, but we are deliberating and talking about ways that we can make that more effective.
Happy to have, have it attributed to him, but I just don't want you to lose the thread.
I, yes, and that, I became very clear and aware that that was a, a gap. That might be part of the issue, I think. Okay, so, um, Groundwater Protection District. This, again, is going to be on the, um, public hearing. Um, I get the sense that there's not a huge call to arms on this one, that, um, it's possible they may decide not to keep it on the agenda. I'm not sure, but I still have it here as a placeholder because it has been officially requested and, um, the, the Planning Board did ask that it be included. But again, they're gonna submit any language, um, to us that they, um, are going to recommend on that one.
Or they withdraw.
Or they withdraw.
Or they withdraw.
Yeah. Uh, citizen petitions, those are, there were some changes recommended to, to those, however, since they are citizen petitions, I don't have the ability to change what has been collectively petitioned to the town. So those, including any, you know, perceived errors or whatever, they're written as submitted and that's why I couldn't make any further changes to these. The only thing we could possibly do if we wanted, and I would just caution us against writing too much, um, I just include it as our summary. So I just very plainly said, this is a citizen petition filed pursuant to. Uh, throughout the document, you'll notice, we made sure that all of our reference to Mass General laws is consistent with the GL. Um, that was one of the other small things that we were able to update with this latest revert, uh, revision.
I don't think there's any question, you ought to leave these things alone. The ands all.
We can't, no, the law says we can't do it.
You can't change it.
That's not the fact, and for good reason. If someone put in a petition, let's say they had explosive deletions in it, you can change it. Then, that does not say explosive deletions in it.
Yeah.
There's nothing that says you have to put it in, in the wording. You have to include the intent of the petitioner.
Well, I think that's great.
I think that's-
I mean, just to make the clarification, because we have changed-
I think it's a given, I think.
Where there were clearly, it was misleading as it was put on the petition. We have taken things like that out so that we still captured the intent, but not the misleading nature that was in there.
I am merely the public servant at the will of the Board of Selectmen, so however you decide to move forward, I, I respect that.
We're gonna leave it alone.
Okay, Article thirty ninth. Do you notice?
Forty or forty-one, yes.
Yeah.
This is the street of, yeah.
Okay, but, okay, so the good news is we've made a lot of progress. We've found the former developer. We've made contact. We're getting all our ducks in a row. In the best case scenario, we're still not gonna have it ready, so we just decided to pull it. Uh, well, we didn't decide. The, um, chairman of the Planning Board said that we should pull these from the warrant. However, I was assured and asked to be assured that this will not be, um, forgotten until next spring, that we will continue to move forward to get the street acceptances and all of the other related matters resolved. Um, so that next year, when this shows up, we know for sure that it will be on the agenda.
How many, how many years have we done this? Submit for-
Since, since I got here in two thousand thirteen.
Street acceptance and-
Well, fourteen.
Can never get around it.
Yeah. So anyway, those, um, I will, and I didn't wanna start tinkering with the numbering yet. I want to, um, I wanted to just leave it in for now, so we have some line in the sand. And then finally, we have, now, I admittedly, I really wanted to get to these today, but I wasn't able to. I will work on that tomorrow so that by Monday's work session, we will have something to review. Uh, but I can certainly walk through these articles with you if you so choose. But there has not been any changes to them since the first time I sent them to you.
It wasn't definitely the initial, it was the new, yeah?
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. Those are all the changes that I made, what I said.
I have one question. So why does everybody else get their middle initial on them?
Do you have a middle initial? I was wondering about that.
Had one for over six years.
Really? Wow.
Well, what is it?
What is it?
Be always has.
A B?
During this time for twenty-five years with a middle initial.
You know, it's funny because I, every time, everything I looked at, it didn't have your middle initial.
He's an attorney of good deals, so there's no extra charge for the middle initial.
Really? What's it, what's it stand for? Are you gonna tell us? You're gonna keep us in suspense.
Barry.
Oh, Barry, of course. It'll look like a Barry to me.
No, I have, I have a question. Is this the time for me to bring up the fact that some weeks ago, I told you folks that I would like to open the warrant and submit a, an article for a change to a bylaw, the changes, the term limits, part of the planning board? I told you about that some weeks ago.
I did hear something about that.
And, um, I have the wording for it. If you'd like to discuss it or go from, or go from there?
I'd like to discuss it before we actually open the meeting, that's the word. Before we open the, before we discuss it.
Yeah, yeah.
Talking about the-
Yeah.
Why would we do this? So it, it's two terms and your proposal is to make it three. Why wouldn't we just get rid of the term?
Well, we are, we are. We're supposed to be getting rid of the terminology altogether.
Oh, that makes sense. Oh, thanks.
It's a, it-
No, but you still, no, you still have a term.
Well, it, it still doesn't sound right here to me.
Well, what's it, so, so right, is this is, as far as we know, the only board committee that has any term?
The only board that has term limits.
Okay, so, so, and we've uncovered the fact that that could be detrimental to the board and we would, or someone believed detrimental to the town. So why don't we just get rid of-
I've talked to Martha and Holger Luther both about it. They both have a history on this, how this came about.
So, so I'm sympathetic, but, but why wouldn't we go all the way and be consistent with everything else, which is to eliminate the ter- a, the, the term limit rather than just make it from years to term?
Yeah, I don't understand the wording.
Isn't that what it says?
No, it just changes years to term to allow us on the term.
Oh, no, no, the, the article is to see if the town will amend it by striking out the sentence, any planning board member may serve for not more than three consecutive terms.
Okay, they wanna take out that whole segment.
Just take out the whole sentence.
Okay.
They find that's-
Made it worse. The rest is explanation.
Yeah, I don't know why some of it is italicized in the line, you know.
And the reason this is important, in, in, in Martha's opinion and Holger's opinion and mine, is because the Planning Board, to be effective on the Planning Board, you really gotta have an institutional memory. You really gotta understand what the, what the, what the history of the Planning Board and these bylaws have been. And, and forcing these people out, I can tell you, you're gonna lose two pretty qualified members if we don't change this now.
I, I see where your confusion is because I'm looking at it like these are two separate things. That when you underline and cross something out, you're implying that you're taking something out and you're replacing it.
That's what it looks like.
But the first part of the sentence is to strike out the entire sentence.
So why?
So it's somewhat, yeah.
Why are there no, we don't understand anyway.
Just get rid of what's in there. That's all we need to do.
That's all we're doing.
Yeah, so you get, you gotta get rid of the underlines and the italics and the years and the blah blah blah.
That's all.
Just put the, you just put the current, whatever the current- Thanks, I don't need you for that.
This came to me from Martha and Holger, and I talked to both of them about it, uh, at length.
What's the history? Why did they put term limits in the first one?
Holger thinks it, it stems back to a nineteen seventy-eight issue between a Planning Board member and the Planning Board, okay? And-
A nameless planning board.
I know, I know who it is.
He or she shall not be used.
I know who it is, I'm not gonna tell, but, uh, but, uh, but that was apparently, that's Holger's memory, okay? And, uh, and he said it was idiotic then, it's still idiotic, and it's the only board in town that's got term limits. That's, that was my steal. You, you okay with that?
It needs to be done right if we're gonna do it.
There's an awful lot of writing here. Uh, Martha, the bottom's got her own comments that she wants to include and all that kind of stuff.
I had one other, um, potential article depending on the board's, the board's, um, willingness to consider other, um, articles. There is a, uh, local option for communities to adopt a, uh, local option meals tax, which would add a point seven five percent to existing meals tax revenue that is already, um, collected within the town of Topsfield. Um, my, my, um, research, it, it really just shows that we could perhaps be entitled to collect, um, anywhere from fifty to sixty-seven thousand dollars annually for the meals tax, one-third of which represents, um, the local option portion of the meals tax that's collected in Topsfield. But one-third of that actually comes from the Topsfield Fair. And you can see that in the, um, projected revenue that the board, that the, um, state puts online for the months of September and October. So I know that we've been talking and we haven't said, we haven't talked about it in, in more detail, but our time for including it in the warrant is running short, so I wanted to make sure that, um, I had all the information and that I got that to you so that you could decide whether or not it should go in the warrant, uh, this year. If so, the earliest it would be able to take effect would be, I think, in July, July first. So it's, uh, three months after. It's based on a calendar quarter because you have to give the state notice. Uh, and then they have to start collecting on your behalf. Um, so we must drink a lot of coffee in this town, probably from me. Um, but apparently, anywhere from fifty-two, fifty, well, the numbers that I did, I had an average of, since it was enacted in two thousand nine, we've collected or could have potentially have collected about, I think it's like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So you know what we did collect, then you add, if you add the three quarters of a percent, you can figure out what we-
They tell you, the, the state D O R tells you how much, every month since two thousand nine, when it was implemented, how much you could have collected because they're, remember, they're tracking sales tax, sales, meals tax from everybody in Topsfield. So they're able to figure out if you had the surcharge, what would your collection have been? So I've averaged that it's at least, uh, fifty thousand. Um, I think if I base it on the last full year, fiscal year of projections, I think it told, it would- I think it totaled about sixty-seven thousand, so, but, you know, that's also, you know, there's, there's a lot of variables in there. But it's potentially, it would represent reoccurring revenue that the town could use to offset and to hopefully mitigate, um, the impact of the primary source of our revenue, which is probably real estate and property tax. So I'm bringing that to you because if there's, if there wants, if there's a will of the board to include that on the warrant, we're running out of time, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what the numbers look like, and what the wording would sound like, what it would look like, um, and I think I've given you that information in your packets for your discussion. So we can add that to things in the next warrant, I need to get done.
Is there any downside to that?
Well, yeah, I, I, well, I think that there, that there's two sides to it, right?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
We're, we're talking, we're starting, I think, to talk a big game about revitalizing downtown.
Yeah.
And how pro-business we are, and those kind of things, I, and even, I'm not against new sources of revenue, but unless I'm missing something, this is, yeah, this is not a pro-business.
We've had the same kind of discussions when we talk about changing the tax classification. We haven't wanted to change the tax classification, because it puts too much of a burden on the, on the business owners, and we've said, that's, if, if you want to increase, you know, e-
And it's about-
Improve the business climate in town, you, you don't do it by raising their taxes.
It's about a tip, it's about attracting new restaurants or so, I mean, not to go too far back, but I, I recollection when we stopped being a dry town was, everybody had these fantasies about a gourmet restaurant downtown, and we were going to have a day-after-town meeting, people were going to be fighting over that liquor license, and I'm still waiting on about you. So it's, I think it's a concern, and it's also, sometimes we take the approach of putting it on the warrant, and letting the town meeting decide, you know, thumbs up or thumbs down, but, but it, it's a balance between a new revenue source and whether or not it hurts, uh, attracting other businesses.
Well, with the, with the spending level that we're at today, it's difficult to walk away from a fifty or sixty thousand dollar revenue source.
One thing to consider as well is that this was instituted in two thousand nine, you know, when the economy really had the, the bubble burst. Uh, and one of the reasons, I don't know if you had a chance to read the article that I provided for you, uh, but one of the reasons a lot of towns were really apprehensive was because at the time, the state was also increasing the sales tax from five to six and a quarter, and the meals tax to six and a quarter, and since then, I think there's over two hundred and nine communities that have adopted it. Uh, so something to consider to offset your, the concern, or the issue, the other side, is that if everybody around us has already adopted it, um, then that issue of, are we attractive to potential restaurants may be more of a moot point at this point, now that it's been in place for over, you know, nine years or so. So that might be part of our research, is to see who around us has already done it, what are they collecting, and, um, but I mean, this was even mentioned originally by, um, when we did our consulting with the Collins Center, they said, oh, you know, have you even considered doing the meals tax? And then when I looked into it as well, it, yeah, interesting, we, we also have a, um, boarding, I think it's a boarding, it's a, it's a boarding room tax, so we adopted that, but we never adopted the meals tax, so, and of course, I don't even think we had any boarding rooms, but, or boarding houses. So, um, it was interesting just to look at the history of it, so there's, there's a lot of information online, including a, an estimate of all the communities who are doing it, and I would just bring it to the board for your consideration, I don't have a position either way, I just, I think it was my responsibility to point you to potential options, because there aren't that many with Prop two and a half, that you could be generating additional revenue that could offset some of the costs of our increasing, you know, education.
I mean, it's, it's hard to project it with the, with the reality basis, you know, with someone with a restaurant, would they put it in Raleigh rather than Topsfield because of this? The people are going to drive to Raleigh, those are pizzas, that are tops of other pizzas, you know, and I know, it's-
I don't think it's going to have much to do with the market analysis to decide if that restaurant should go to Topsfield or Raleigh.
But it, but it, but it is a burden on, on, it is potentially, I, I have no problem with bringing it forward and letting it be debated.
Well, we, we have that article, and the article does help us understand who else has it or doesn't have it, just looking at the picture. Topsfield, Boxer, Milton, as I saw them at, Raleigh, Newbury, uh, uh, Wenham does not have it, that's about what I saw of the local. I would say that if everybody around us had it, I would like to not have it, because that's the one thing that would be an enticement. Unfortunately, it's a mixed bag of some do and some don't, Devers has it, uh, but some do and some don't. Um, I, I tell you the other piece, though, on this, I, I think it's more worth, uh, the debate, the discussion, maybe let citizens join in, whatever else, even the restaurants and that. I think that in the middle of March, with two weeks to go to provide the warrant and get this thing done, this is the wrong time to be doing it. You did tell us about the change in the bylaw, uh, that was coming along, that you just, that we just discussed about term limits, and this is a sentence that we're taking out of one of our bylaws, probably not the most-
Well, that's an easy one, but I, but-
It's still an adding to it, and I think it's, I think it's fairly straightforward, and you did warn us about it. I think that trying to do something like this, which is, as Mark said, somewhat just, worthy of discussion, perhaps we should put it on next, next year's warrant, so to speak, and take the time to discuss it with people and do the research. It, it's very easy to do the research on every one of them, because the state is already collecting on the six and a, six and a quarter percent, and so they know what revenue they're getting from every town, and that's why, as Kelly said, it's very straightforward, as you can see, and they have a history of it going back even, even before that, because they have, not just the, they were doing meals tax before this ever came along. So the data, including every other town around us, whatever else is available, that, data's not the issue, it's the question that, that Mark brings up, is, does it really help? Would it help? Does it make a difference? I, I don't know that that's the case, but I, we don't know. I, I, I think less than one percent is probably not going to make a big difference, but it's worth it to have it as a good discussion.
I think we ought to, I think we ought to know what we're talking about, and it distinctly don't.
A little too late, a little too late, a little too late in the game.
And we're going to put another monkey on Kelly's back to get it done.
No, I'm willing to do the work, because I think it's the best thing to do for the town, but you're the, you guys get elected by these people, you know, by the citizens, so you decide what you'd like to do, and, you know, sixty thousand dollars.
I wouldn't mind having another fifty or sixty thousand bucks, but I'd rather do it next year after we know what we're talking about.
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting that there's lots of information that I can provide to you.
As, as you have.
I understand, okay.
So I think this is an order I move to hold in an end of town meeting warrant. I'll second.
Your vote? Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul's favor.
We're, it's open.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I, I, I move that we add, we ought to go relative to deletion of the Planning Board term limits.
For the Planning Board.
Yeah, I think we should.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
I-
All right. Thank you.
I move that we, well, does anybody want to add anything else?
Let's give it close quickly.
I'll talk slowly.
Second.
I didn't say it, yeah. Lingering one.
We're all back.
I move that we close the end of town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
Go.
You vote? And you vote, how do you vote?
All right.
I, I will, I-
That was a general bylaw, right? That's in the general bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I would probably, I would be adding that to the section on um, acceptances of mass general law, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, general bylaws right after that, so, the way it's numbered, the way we have it numbered right now, the twenty-nine is delinquent taxpayers, thirty is marijuana establishments, I might suggest that we would put it after twenty-nine, um, so that we can keep the marijuana establishments articles together.
Yeah.
So I'd probably do number thirty.
I'm going to allow people all together.
Okay.
So you're going to make it number thirty? No, thirty is the marijuana.
Yeah, no, 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 I am, I'm going to put it between the delinquent taxpayers and marijuana, so it'll become the new thirty, assuming there's no other changes to the numbers that are already outlined here.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so for Monday's meet, for Mondays, we have a work session at five o'clock, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
So I will have a draft, uh, before I, I can do this tomorrow.